It is six o'clock. I will call the City of Alligan City Council Meeting to order. Could I please have roll call?
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Westover.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Canales.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hands.
Present.
Mayor Perrigo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. For those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number four, four A, is approval of the regular council meeting agenda for November 10th, 2025. And could I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? I'll make that motion.
And support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving down to agenda item number five, five A, is approval of the regular council meeting minutes from October 27th, 2025. And I was all in everyone's packet. Can I please get a motion to approve?
I make motion to approve the minutes from October 27th. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? They stand as is? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving down to agenda item number six, six A, is selection of the mayor and mayor pro tem for calendar year 2025 to 2026. And I will turn this over to city staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder for city council, unlike other communities where the residents vote for a mayor, in the City of Alligan, the mayor is selected by council every November. So amongst you seven, you guys decide who is going to be mayor and who's going to be mayor pro tem for the upcoming year. Just a reminder for council, the mayor's primary job and sole job is to preside over the meetings. There's no special veto power, like you have in really large cities, there's no agenda setting, it's just presiding over meetings and conferring with staff when we have to have them come in and sign documents for us. So I just wanted to be clear on that upfront with everyone. The way we typically do this in the past is I take over the meeting right now. I will open the floor to nominations. If you would like to nominate someone, you can say, I nominate Bob. There's no Bobs, I believe, good. You say, I nominate Bob. Bob can say, sounds good. I'll throw my name in the hat. Or Bob will say, nope, I really don't want to do that. I like what I'm doing right now. And then we kind of move along that way. We will start with mayor first, and then we'll move to mayor pro tem. I believe you all have pieces of paper in front of you. We do not follow Robert's Rules of Order per our council rules and procedures. So you are allowed to, you know, vote this way for this one item. Typically, all of our other votes are voice votes. So with that, I'm going to open the floor to receive nominations for the position of mayor. And please use your microphones.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Will Walker for mayor.
I will, I'm sorry, I won't accept that right now.
Did you say I won't? Okay.
I would like to nominate Mayor Perrigo retain her position.
I'll accept.
Are there any other nominations?
Yeah, nominate Mr. Hands.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Okay, so the way this will work is you will write down who you would like to be mayor on the piece of paper in front of you. Fold it over, hand it down to us, and we'll let Parker do the tallying and make the announcement. You can only vote for one. I was just sure if there's a question down there on that, but just to be clear. At the end of the day, we better have seven pieces, seven slips of paper. All right, the votes have been tallied. There are three votes for Mayor Protem Hands for mayor and four votes for Mayor Perrigo as mayor. Mayor Perrigo has been selected. Now we're moving on to Mayor Protem. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Melanie for Protem.
I would accept.
Any other nominations? All right, you guys have pieces of paper in front of you correctly. All right. Totals, two for councilmember Hooker for mayor pro tem and five for Mayor Protem Hands to remain as mayor pro tem. All right, Mayor Perrigo, you can take the thing back over. You're now at six B.
All right. Agenda item six B is a presentation by the Alligan Food Alliance.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, thank you. And thank you for letting me do this formally, you know, because I, I'm actually, we're actually your neighbor. We are on the other side of the Democrats in the back. And so we are the Alligan Food Alliance. We're the official food policy council for the county. And so that means that we look at the policy behind food and we look at the big picture of the food system. So, so we're not a food pantry. We're always having to tell people that emergency food is one piece of the food system, but it's not a piece that we even like to, you know, to rely on, right? I mean, restaurants, farmers, food entrepreneurs, the food trucks, grocery stores, everybody's part of the food system. And everybody is essentially because we all eat. And so anyway, that's who we are, what we're committed to. If you, I know you can't bring up outside, they said you can't bring up outside websites, but under alliganfoodalliance.org, if you click on it, our mission is to connect, gather, share, and then transform. Under connect, we have a map of the county's farmers. To the best of our ability, we map the farmers. If you go up under, under gather, there's resources of every imaginable kind of food resources, how to get on WIC, how to get on food stamps, where you can connect to, as a farmer, to USDA and all the different services. If you go up under share, we have a really extensive map of the farmers' markets in the county, the grocery stores in the county, the food pantries in the county, everything that we could find that's food related. We had, we did a lot of, especially with the changes of this administration and all the slashing, we were doing a lot of grant writing. And Joel was amazing with, you know, helping us with like letters of support. We started winning and we won about $91,000, you know, since, since, since like April. We put, we expanded the number of seed libraries in the county. So now there's, with the support of our librarians now, and we have a seed librarian in our office. And there's like 11 seed libraries in the county. And then we also started growing gardens, you know, building gardens with the health departments. They donated some money to buy materials. So we have gardens at Grand Ravine in Alligan for the seniors. And we have also raised but gardens in Douglas, at Douglas Cove. But one of our, and then we won some money from MSU to really do some power mapping of our food system. And so we've been really going deep, like where are all the restaurants? Where's all the little tiny grocery stores? Where are all the Dollar Generals? Because Dollar General sells food, right? So we want to know where's, not just where there's really quote unquote good food, but where there's just food in general. So we can kind of start determining where there are food deserts and where we might need to focus. And then our biggest grant was with the Michigan Health Endowment Fund, and Joel was definitely supportive of that one. And we won a grant to hold listening sessions. So we've been holding them. We held one at the Griswold. We've been holding them in all four corners of the county. And tomorrow's the last one that we're holding. But then after the listening sessions, we're doing surveys across the, across the county, then focus groups, one-on-one interviews, to ultimately create a task force that will say, what does this county really need? How can we be resilient so that when those kinds of pressures are happening at the state level or at the federal level, our people are not hurting? How do we create a resilient, strong system where we're supporting our farmers, we're supporting our restaurants, we're supporting our food entrepreneurs, our grocery stores, like rural grocery stores struggle, like you won't believe, you know, because they cannot compete with the Walmarts out in the world, right? And people complain about them, but they have their own struggles. So that's our focus. I just want to kind of let you know who we are and so that, and if you can come tomorrow, that would be amazing. We're, we're just open to listening to everybody's voice. It's called Come to the Table, Your Voice, Your Food, Your Future. We want to hear from everybody. I have another grant out there. Actually, I think it's a USDA grant. It's a fair food grant. And I didn't go for the implementation because we don't have a location. But we went for the technical support to say, what if we could bring in a farm store, a year-round indoor farmer's market, like Argus that they have in Ann Arbor? Or what if we could bring in a food club? Where should it even go? But the initial grant that I've written is like 96,000. We'll find out soon. And it's to listen to the people and say, okay, if we're going to have this, where should it be? Like Will and I talked about forever about the bowling alley, because Joel mentioned the bowling alley. But then it was bought by somebody else. So where would something like that go, like a year round? So people could have access, make better connections to the farmers. And so that's, that's what we've got going on. We're going to work with the GIS department at the county to really get everything on the map, like really get all of our restaurants on the map. Wouldn't that be fun? Like to know where all the restaurants are and, and be able to support them. So anyway, I'm going to give you the, the flyer for Come to the Table. You've probably been seeing our, our logos around. And invite you, you know. And definitely if you can encourage people to do the survey, and if you know people that want to be in the focus group or want to be a part of the task force, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh. Yeah. All right. I'm going to move down to agenda item eight. Eight A is public hearing, second reading, and adoption of ordinance 532 regarding the rezoning of parcels that are formerly known as the Girl Scout property from MDR Medium Density Residential District to a Planned Unit Development District and Preliminary Review of a 38-Unit Mixed Density Residential Development. And Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. As councils are well aware, your ordinances are a two-step process. The first step is a first reading, which occurred at your October 27th meeting. And then your second step is holding the public hearing and then adopting the ordinance during the second reading, which is what is occurring this evening. So the Girl Scout property is located on the north side of the Calumsey River in the northern part of the City of Alligan. It is near the neighborhood of Highland, Rollcott, and Riverside. Historically, the city has attempted to develop this property several times over the past two decades. This is probably the furthest we've ever gotten with this project in developing this land, working with a gentleman by the name of Patrick Kapinga. I believe it's Alligan Development Company LLC is the LLC that he represents. He approached the city council earlier this year if we'd be interested in selling this land to him to develop for residential development. And then the lower level, he would transfer that land to the Alligan Conservation District to be converted into what we are commonly referring to as an outdoor learning lab, so a nature area. But it'll be owned and maintained by the conservation district. Mr. Kapinga has applied through the Planning Commission to rezone. This is approximately 14 acres from the current zoning to PUD, Planned Unit Development. A planned unit development just makes it a little bit more streamlined for us to approve a residential development. We have 38 units, 26, what I would call conventional condominiums, and then 12 row houses that will be split up between two buildings, six per building. We have had a handful of neighborhood meetings. Neighbors came and spoke regarding this at your first reading on October 27th. I do not see any of the neighbors in the audience this evening. Mr. Kapinga could not be here this evening, so he sent his, one of his representatives, Kelsey, is in the audience this evening. If you have any questions for her, she can come up and her and I can tag team on answering any questions that council wanted. But Mr. Kapinga had a pre, another engagement that was already pre-scheduled. So he felt, he was apologetic, asked me to reschedule the public hearing. I'm like, we already scheduled it for tonight, so let's just keep going. Thank you for being, you know, considerate, but send someone in your place. And Kelsey got selected by him to come in his place. Any questions for staff? We've kind of reviewed this multiple times over the past six months. All right, this requires a public hearing, Mayor. Then after the public hearing, it's a recommendation from the Planning Commission and city staff that you approve this rezoning.
All right. At 6:19, I will open the floor for public comment. If you have any public comment on this agenda item, please approach the podium and state your name and address. I am seeing no public comment tonight on this item, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, so council, the recommendation from planning is to approve this. Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion that we adopt ordinance 532.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion amongst council, questions they may have for staff? Okay, seeing none. I will go ahead and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you for coming out. I appreciate it. All right, moving down to agenda item number nine is the first public comment section of the evening. If you have a public comment for an item not on the agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Not seeing anyone approaching the podium. I'm going to move on to agenda item number 11. 11A is city boards, commissions, and area agencies. First up is 11A1 is a review of the October 2025 Brownfield Redevelopment Authority meeting minutes. And it looks like City Manager Di is going to give an update.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. Just for council's information, there is not a council member assigned to the BRA. That's why I'm giving the update and not one of your peers. The BRA meets as needed. They've met, I think, three times so far in the past 12 months. We are going, so at the last meeting, I apologize for that my phone distracted me there. At our last meeting, we are going to, we received a request from the developers, Alan Edwin, who are doing the 42-unit development over at 500 Delano. City, you have an approved Brownfield reimbursement plan with them. As council may remember, once, once the BRA approves it, city council has to approve it. Then it gets submitted to the state for the state's approval. When it was submitted to the state for the state's approval, they requested that the five affordable units, the five units that are going to be, you know, made at an affordable rent level, be extended from eight years to 10 years. Since this did not result in an extension or an increase in the BRA reimbursement plan, that, that was something that the BRA could administratively approve, and we did not have to go back through the city council in the public hearing process. Because the overall tax capture is still at or below what was originally approved by the city council. So that's what BRA did. They reviewed it. They approved the amendment to the plan to extend the five units of affordability from eight years to 10 years at the recommendation or request of the state of Michigan. And now it's back at the state's level for their final approval. Any questions for staff?
All right. Okay. Moving down to 11B1 is under Public Safety, is a review of year-to-date statistics from the police department.
I'm going to invite Police Chief Jay Gibson up to the podium to give a review. I think we have about five or six slides, so just tell Parker when you want him to push next.
So you all have had time to review a lot of these. Basically, when we get through these slides, I'll just open it up for any specific questions you have, anything you didn't understand, things that you don't see that you want to know. I think I would be able to answer most everything you have. And if I can, I can probably get the stat or the information to you relatively quickly in a group email. Joel did a nice job of breaking a bigger section of these calls down into what you see in front of you. You can go on to the next one. So we break down, so this is just through, this piece is just through September. So there's one quarter to go as far as that, those stats. We keep track of how many calls we handle out in the townships. And I would say that of those calls, it's not necessarily that we're being the original entity or taking the report. A lot of those were actually just helping, assisting them. We don't, we try not to take too many where we're the only one there and that we're doing the paperwork and because that leads to, you know, administrative stuff or Janelle and everything like that. So most of those are just us helping out or sending one of our cars out there to help them. The school numbers, we keep that really more for any time that the school administration would like to see a breakdown of, you know, incidents in different buildings that they have. Go ahead, Parker. I don't think I'm going to go over too many of these. Like I said, you've read them. These are just some, some highlighted cases that we've had so far this year where your officers have done a great job in the work that they do. Do you have any questions on any of those or just want to move through those? Go ahead, Parker. Thank you. Is that the last slide?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any, anything that you don't, anything that you wanna see, that you don't understand, that you want us to do, not to do, within reason? The one stat that's not up there that I thought about today, so I got in our, the MCT is the Mobile Computer Turntable on our cars, and we have what's called computer-aided dispatching, so I got in, looked at traffic stops. I did that last week, actually, and traffic stops as of last week for the year were one thousand one hundred and forty-three, and the stat that I don't know that I could get for you is how many tickets we wrote in that, but historically, we're about fifteen percent, which I think some would say is low, but our philosophy is kind of to educate. I think we're pretty sound across the board on that, on how we do things. I mean, some of you may know, like, parking tickets, we'll rip the first one up, and usually that seems to be an olive branch for folks, they're like, really? And I'm like, well, yeah, I mean, I guys don't wanna be out at three-thirty in the morning scraping off your windshield to give you a ticket, you know? If we can give you a break and say, hey, now you know, right? That usually has a high percentage of folks that kinda take, they may not like it, but the fact that we got rid of it, a really high percentage decide that, you know, at least they kinda gave us an olive branch, you know? It was just, it wasn't a black and white situation, so. A lot of work in ordinances, Parker and city hall staff, along with Sergeant Gorbey, do a lot of work on ordinances throughout the year. I think at your last meeting, you might have showed them how many grass notices.
Yeah, the last one, we did a code enforcement update if council members.
Which just astounds my mind that we hand that many out.
Are those in the total for Alleghen City?
No, so the code enforcement is separate from police calls.
And I don't, we don't pull numbers for grass violations either. I mean, that would, we, I don't know, some agencies do things different. I just don't believe in pulling numbers for grass violations, handing out subpoenas. You know, it should be like a call that we're going, you know, so we don't, we don't pull numbers for traffic stops. I'm not trying to inflate the numbers, I wanna be able to show that this is what it is, but we keep track of those secondary things as well.
With the breakdowns, do you see a swing one way or, or another? I mean, are we seeing a higher maybe of stalking than we saw last year?
I would have to go back and look at them.
Okay, I'm just, yeah.
I don't, I don't see anything that is.
Sticking out to you, that's changed.
Something that's concerning, I mean.
Okay.
It's really hard to say what we're gonna have on any, any given week. I mean, I've had Tuesdays back when I was a complaint car, where I've had Tuesdays where I've taken thirteen or fourteen calls, and I'm like, what's going on? And then, you know, I've had, I think our last day before Thanksgiving that we had last year, typically it's a busy night. It was busy, but not for us, you know what I mean? Like downtown was busy, but sometimes it can get a little, little crazy or chaotic, and it didn't, you know? So you just, you just don't know.
So there's not a trend that you're seeing from last year changing? Okay, all right.
We are, we see, and I asked folks that, you know, I work with, because I run the chiefs' meetings every month, and we are all seeing an increase in the homeless situation, mental health is kinda linked hand in hand with that. And I've, you know, asked those folks, I mean, are you doing anything that I'm not doing? You know what I mean? Like, we offer help, we offer to give rides, but they gotta be specific rides, like, we're not a taxi. I will give you a ride to a shelter.
Right.
I will give you a ride to a relative's house, but we're not gonna be that agency that gives people a ride, hey, I wanna go to Cigo, okay, you can go be their problem now, we'll take you to Cigo. We're not doing that, I mean, that's.
You're not helping the situation, you're not solving.
No, you're just playing a shell game, you know what I mean? If they got a specific spot they wanna go to, absolutely, but, but we had an agency bring somebody here last week or the week before, and they weren't welcome there. So then it became.
Yeah.
Our issue, so.
Yeah. Um, with the schools, do you see any trends, or is it, they're not a trend either, anything?
Lot of, you know, a lot of times seems to be a lot more drama every year in the middle school. I, I mean, I didn't have to look at the stats to be like, I know which one has more. You have your, I didn't include the stats, and I can include them later in a separate email as far as like how many vape citations have been issued and things like that. It's not, it's, I wanna say prevalent, but it's not like it doesn't exist. There's, you know, your typical spats between two parties over relationship issues or who said what, you know what I mean? Just, you know, things that kids get into, but the two SROs, Officer Liken, Officer Mead, seem to have a good understanding of it. They, they got a, an award from the schools for the work that they do in the schools. One of those complaints that was up there was one that, that relationship and how fast they were able to solve that, it was really, really useful, so.
Okay.
I was surprised that the, the total number of welfare checks, is that being, I think that was the top.
So welfare check is a, welfare check and suspicious are kinda catchalls for a lot of things. They could be, it's not just, you know, it's, the calls of the neighbor's mail is piled up. Somebody alongside the road, some of our homeless that are acting strange, you know, go check on them. A lot of times, the welfare checks we can clear relatively soon because we can check and see, hey, dispatch, can you tell me if anybody was at six-twenty-two Highland Avenue for an ambulance? Their mail, yep, last week, they were transported to Bronson, or you know what I mean? So then we can kinda call the person back, say, hey, can't give you too much, but, you know, there was an ambulance with dispatch here, okay, thank you, and then this is where I would reach out to. Suspicious is, I mean, you could be driving down the road and be like, what is that? You know, or that doesn't make sense, that looked weird, and we'll just go check it out, but.
Okay. Just looking at the numbers.
I'm not, there you go. Looking at the numbers, and since I'm kinda new to the area, would you say that warmer temperatures might have a higher rate of supposedly cooler? Hundred percent. So our first, we do all of our stats on the calendar year. Our first and our last quarter are generally slower than our middle, our second or third quarter, which would be, you know, after April to, what, October? So we're at, I think I took call number thirty-six fourteen today, an abandoned vehicle. So if you do the math, we might get another five hundred calls, we'll be around, I think we'll be just over four thousand calls, which last year is kinda where we were at, too, forty-two, twenty-eight, or something like that last year. But yeah, nothing, I mean, a lot of our calls are kinda domino effect, too. I mean, you'll try to resolve it, somebody's still not real happy with how it was resolved or how it worked out for them, or a family member then gets involved, or somebody else gets involved, and, you know, kinda, and we do daily, nightly briefings, I can start sending some more of those to you that have a little more information, but every night and every day, everybody that works will send a briefing just so we kinda know what has happened, and kinda like, oh, you know, this could be an issue, and then that kinda makes you drive by that area more often just to be seen, so. But yeah, warmer, warmer months are historically busier than the colder months.
The reason why I ask is because I was looking at, this is a year-to-date summary that you post had, and I liked the, the percentages were actually lower than twenty-twenty-four for a lot of them, and you weren't trending in the direction of even exceeding that amount if that was the case, because I did some calculations, and I was like, I was impressed, actually, so I wanted to give props to you on that.
Thank you. Any other, anything that you're not seeing, any, so, you know, we, we do get feedback from Joel and Parker downtown businesses about presence, we try to be mindful of that. I mean, they're constant, every briefing that I see from the night shift includes checking the bathrooms to make sure that, you know, they're not being used for what they're not supposed to be used for. The cameras downtown have been helpful a few times for us, so that's nice. But other than that, I mean, all four of our trucks are running well right now, and I feel like they look good, they represent the city well.
All right, anything else from council? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you much, have a good night.
All right, eleven D-one is a request to adopt Resolution twenty-five point-three-four to accept a T E D F grant from the Michigan Department of Transportation and appoint the city manager as the authorized rep for the city of Alleghen.
All right, so with T E D F grants that you get from the state of Michigan, there is a three-step approval process. The first step is us, is the city passing the resolution, it's twenty-five thirty-four, it's in your packet. We submit that M dot, M dot then sends an award to proceed or award of notice to us, and then, or notice of award form to us. We then take that notice of award form, and we come back to city council with the notice to proceed for the contractor, that was the low bid. So even though we know who the low bid is, we have to have this approved first, because it, it just has to work its way through the bureaucracy and Lansing. Appointing the city manager as the authorized representative is important here because, first of all, it's a check and balance. If we have everything just run through the DPW, we don't have anyone, you know, kinda checking their eyes, you know, checking their work. Also, some of the contracts that have to be signed as part of this project are gonna be larger than what the DPW director can sign, so it also has to run through me as well. So that's why we have you appoint the city manager as the authorized representative. Any questions for staff?
No.
All right.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five point-three-four?
I'll make that motion for Resolution twenty-five point-three-four.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion amongst council or questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Right, eleven D-two is a request to adopt Resolution twenty-five point-three-five, appointing the city manager as the authorized signer for all Michigan Department of Transportation aero contracts.
So Michigan Department of Transportation aero is for our contracts with their aeronautics division. This past Friday, it was brought to staff's attention that M dot aero sent an email to former mayor Roger Byrd requesting that he sign the M dot aero contract for the design of the resurfacing of the runway at the airport. The way M dot aero handles their contracts, they use a third-party system called OneSpan, and you have a username and password to log in, sign in, approve the documents within a certain time. So if the person does not go into this as soon as they get the email from M dot aero, it expires and M dot has to start the process all over again. When they reached out to the city staff, and it was Jeff Maury who they reached out to, after they got Doug's email saying, I no longer am employed at the city, please contact Jeff Maury, Jeff said, well, Roger Byrd isn't the mayor, hasn't been on council for a year now, and we get a new mayor every November. And they said, it'd be really nice if the city of Alleghen would just appoint a staff person that could be the overseer of this. So we discussed it this morning during our department head meeting. We have a department head meeting every two weeks, the day of councils, and we decided as a collective leadership team that it would be best if city council adopts this Resolution twenty-five thirty-five, appointing the city manager to be the signatory on all M dot aero contracts. Clearly, in accordance with the city's code and policies, we'll only act within the authority given by city council, so you still approve all these projects as you would with anything else. It's just this way, M dot will have this on file, upload, you know, at this time, my email, and we're going with the phrase city manager instead of a person, so if my time comes to an end here, Tracy Stahl or whoever's here just has to tell M dot, here's the new email to send it to. Any questions for staff on why we're recommending this?
All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five thirty-five.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any other discussion, comments amongst council? This seems to be kind of like what we just adopted above. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna move down to eleven E-one, which is a request to approve accounts payable and payroll in Mayor Pro Tem's hands. That was a tongue twister.
It's requested that the city council approve accounts payable in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, and payroll in the amount of one-thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eleven cents, for total dispersment of three-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Motion to approve.
All right.
Support.
Okay, so moved and supported. Any questions of staff on the payroll? No, did you get all of your questions answered, Will?
I did. Yeah, one quick one. Joel, on the Booker, the grant, the Booker grant, that's, that was finished in July. Is that right? Did we end?
Milbacher's portion was completed in July, I believe. So that grant went through the end of September, the fiscal year for the state of Michigan is October first through September thirtieth. We had to have all of our funding accounted for and spent by September thirtieth. This was the July billing for Milbacher. For those who may not be quick to recall what Booker stands for, that's the Lead Service Line Replacement Program. The city received a three-million-dollar grant. About halfway through the project, or halfway through the grant process, we, city council chose to contract some of the work out to Milbacher to help us spend the money faster than what we could with our own in-house staff.
Okay.
Any questions regarding, is there, is there a deeper question? Did I answer the question? I'm not sure if I did, Will, I.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good. I was under the impression that we, everything had to be spent by the end of July.
Yeah, so, so, so we.
Incurred, incurred.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, so it's been incurred. Yeah, it's been taken care of.
Okay.
Yeah, we're being reimbursed for that.
But we haven't, we had until the end of September.
To the end of September.
Send the, send the state.
Well, just to incur stuff, we're still closing stuff out with, you know, Eagle.
Oh, okay, okay.
Is there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, all right, there's a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven E-two is a request to adopt the city of Alleghen Public Participation Plan.
All right, I'm gonna ask Mohammed to come up to the podium. As you recall, Mohammed is our SEDOM Fellow, Community Economic Development Association of Michigan, he's an employee of theirs, but he's been assigned to the city of Alleghen to help us with housing and other community development initiatives for this year.
So, as you guys know, we're part of the R C, which is a redevelopment-ready community. When this was created, we're actually one out of two communities that was certified, so we're being, re-certifying ourselves since twenty-fourteen. The last time we got, the recent one was like January twenty-twenty-one, it was a, a pair ago, so we have this trello where we also have a, a person in a M A D C where it's a community planner, she helped us like kinda stay on track to see what needs to get done and stuff like that, so Joel Parker and I have been meeting, so we're kinda ahead of schedule, so. The reason why we do this is to, so we can have kinda access to grants and things like that, so that's the reason why we have to get certified every couple of years. So, our plan kinda stayed the same, nothing really changed. The only thing obviously changes is like the community stakeholder, which obviously you guys know the hospital kinda changed to be can now, and then also our text message alert that we sent to our residents, so those are the only two things that really changed, but everything else really stayed the same. So, I talked to our person that was at M A D C, she said we're kinda on schedule, so our reservation doesn't, is not due until January, but Parker and Joel know, like, I like to get things done ahead of time instead of waiting at the last minute, so. Out of all the stuff, I think this is the easiest one where I didn't have to change much, it was, everything was already there, so I just added those two things where the hospital changed the name and then the text message alert, so. You guys have any questions?
I'd, I'd love to learn, understand more of this. Are we, you said one of two communities?
Yeah, yeah, twenty-fourteen, when this was created, another one was like Roosevelt, I think it's like, they said Detroit, so, like, it's somewhere in Detroit where we're like one of the two, so. So uh, one was created, so.
In the state.
Yeah.
At the time.
At the time, yeah.
We were, we were the first along with uh, Roseville.
Yeah, it's like Detroit suburb.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now there are dozens of communities that are certified.
Yeah, there's a bunch of more now, uh, but at the, when it started, I think we're one of the two, so, yeah.
Nice.
Any questions?
I don't see any questions, thank you, Mohammed. Alright, can I get a motion to adopt the City of Alleghen Public Participation Plan?
I'll make a motion, will you adopt the Public Participation Plan?
Support.
Alright, any further discussion amongst council? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alright, eleven E three is approval of an amendment to the fee schedule establishing a holiday rate for rental of the Griswold Auditorium on official holidays when city offices are closed.
I will handle this one.
Okay.
Uh, so last year, the Griswold Auditorium was host to a Christmas Eve church service. Um, there was a group of area churches that wanted to get together and have one area, the Griswold seats six-hundred people. Um, and that was uh, what, you know, the capacity that they were looking for. From multiple different agencies to host one joint Christmas service. Um, this was the first time that we had ever been approached um, to host an event on a holiday. Um, typically, most people aren't getting married on the fourth of July. Um, people have done some Halloween weddings at the Griswold, which is fun, but that's not a typical city holiday, uh, Christmas Eve is. Um, so uh, we agreed to it, it worked out uh, for the area churches. Um, we were happy to host and then uh, they, after the fact, we had some discussions internally amongst city staff. As to what this would look like, should they reach out and want to do this again. Um, to pay a staff member to be at the Griswold on Christmas Eve specifically, uh, they're getting double time, it's their holiday pay rate. Um, so it comes at quite an expense to the city to have a staff person there uh, for the hours. Uh, that that particular rental included, um, in your memo, it detailed that uh, there was Tuesday setup time. And then uh, well, I should say there was setup time on the twenty-third and then obviously the event on the twenty-fourth as well. Um, so what we are proposing is a holiday rate. Uh, when folks are interested in renting the Griswold, right now, there are two different rates, a weekday and a weekend rate. And what we want to do is adjust and include a uh, holiday rate you see on the screen. Um, a hundred-and-fifty dollars per hour or seven-hundred-and-fifty for six hours. For a holiday if it falls on a weekday and then two-hundred per hour and nine-hundred per six hours if that holiday happens to fall on a weekend. And then an additional hourly rate after six hours, seventy-five dollars on a weekday and one-hundred dollars for a weekend. Happy to answer any questions there may be.
Is there a minimum time allotment?
We did not consider that, no. Yeah, I suppose the V hour, yeah.
Other questions?
And just for clarification, when this memo was typed up, I made a modification to it before it got sent out and I deleted the. Weekday after hour of seventy-five, that's right, if you look at the report, I think it just says a hundred, there's a flat fee, so. This is what the recommendation is, is what you're seeing on the screen.
Okay.
So it looks like the weekday just becomes the weekend rate? If the holiday's on a week.
Correct, yes.
And then the weekend rate goes up? An extra fifty?
That's correct.
Alright, any other questions?
Are we going to have to post what our holidays are in the form and also someplace so people understand?
We can update our form for that reason, most definitely.
You know what our official holidays are, that they don't go, oh, it's Columbus Day, well, we don't have Columbus Day as one of officials or.
Yeah, we'll list our official holidays every year.
Just write in that same form.
Update the form, that's easy.
That's a good idea.
So, so they get a discount if they do six hours? Is the seventy-five going to cover the staff that goes above and beyond that, like?
To a point. It's not going to cover staff that is taking time away from their family to come in for a special event, that's not part of their regular job, but. We are here to serve the public.
Then we have a rate for a sound person?
Correct, yep, um.
Going to adjust that at all in this, or?
That wasn't the plan, we were just going to leave it at that flat two-hundred dollars for a sound and light operator.
Per day?
Correct, yep.
I, I would view this our toe-in-the-water kind of discussion, looking at rates for holidays. It is really just one so far that we've had, correct?
Yeah.
Um, and if we, if we need to come back to you, we will gladly come back to you as we evaluate it.
Any other questions of staff? Alright, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the amendment to the fee schedule establishing a holiday rate for rental of the Griswold Auditorium?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Alright, it's been moved and supported, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven E four is a discussion regarding reformatting the city council agenda to include two new sections. Um, a written petition to the city council and the second one would be acceptance of gifts and donations to the city of Alleghen.
We are not asking you to take action this evening, this is just a discussion. We struggle sometimes when someone comes in and asks they want to present something to the council and where we put them on the agenda. We used to have our written petitions to the city council, but we took that off, we said we'll just throw them under the.
Six.
The appropriate department.
They can't fall under six?
So six is, is uh, special presentations and recognitions by mayor or council.
Mm-hmm.
So that's when the mayor or council wants to recognize someone, so your Alleghen High School. Boys tennis team or girls gymnastics team at one state or something like that. So we used to have our written petitions, but we took that off. And so, we're wondering if council wants us to put it back in. Six B that happened this evening.
Would be.
We just wanted to put her somewhere because we didn't want the Food Alliance to wait till the end of the agenda. Because if it's a member of the public, it seems preposterous to me to make a member of the public wait till the end of the agenda when they just want to say. Here's the cool stuff we're doing or here's an issue that I want you guys to look in and it's more than just a public comment, because public comment. Per your policy, you do not engage.
Right.
But a presentation is different than a public comment. You know, it's just, hey, I want you guys to consider, you know, you want to have a discussion, you want to have a conversation. So, we think we can reintroduce written petitions under number ten with some stipulations that they're limited to five minutes in their presentation. And this is for like organizations in the public or uh, Alleghen heroes when they came to the last meeting requesting a reduced rent of the Griswold. The second thing that we'd like you to do is to add something for acceptance of gifts and donations. Uh, when someone gives above and beyond to the city of Alleghen. I feel it's important for council to recognize that gift. And it be returned, you know, not just recognize it here, but direct staff to send a thank you letter or something like that. Uh, we are slowly rolling out our fundraising campaign of give butter. We've already had someone donate a hundred dollars by just scanning the QR code for the Regent Theater. I feel we need to tell that person, high five, thank you, because I think. Leaving out the capital improvements of a hundred and some thousand dollars that we spent on the chiller. We lost twenty thousand this past fiscal year on that building. Now people will remind me, Joel, viewed as a city park, you spent twenty thousand dollars to have a beautiful park that people got to go in, you know, all the year long. But you know, when someone goes above and they give extra, I think we can high five them, because they didn't get a membership with that, they just gave. Like I buy, my family buys a membership to the theater as our way of supporting the theater. But we get to see, you know, any movie by just showing our card when the time comes. So, we'd also like to add that as a way to just, you know, recognize when people go above and beyond and give, you know, monetary or donate, you know, items to us that we need.
For the written, for number ten?
Yeah.
Um, I'm just thinking about, I don't know, and maybe this is irrelevant, but. Somehow of, you know, if they have a presentation, they cannot come in and set up their own PowerPoint presentation. It needs to be something that is emailed to city staff.
Yep.
Okay.
Because we've had that before where someone walked in with their computer.
Correct.
Realized we had an HDMI cable in there and plugged it right into their computer and said, please show my screen and we're like.
So this would only be.
I guess it will now.
This would only be for someone who had previously contacted city hall that, hey, we want to do a presentation like tonight.
And taking it to the next level, I mean, this is why we don't want you guys to act on it, because I think you need to discuss. When do you say, yeah, you can present? Or you say, no, we really don't care? You speak during public comment? Because there might be something someone wants to talk to you about where it's just not relevant. To uh, city council. Case in point, I'm not saying it's not relevant, but I receive periodically some wonderful information about five G. And how it is going to increase autism by the hundredth fold. And I need to stop five G in my community. And it's a bunch of articles that have been photocopied and jammed into an envelope, I thought that's what that was actually. Carl, when I saw your envelope, I'm like, oh, they sent the council too, but that's just somebody who wants you guys to go get your clothes tailored by them. So there's part of me says, instead of going to city council, or instead of coming to staff, if someone wants to do a written petition, two council members can.
Just like our, our rules are anyhow.
To add something to the agenda, two council members.
Yep.
And we can amend our policy to go that way, so you're not relying on myself or Parker to be quote-unquote the gatekeeper.
Yeah.
And then again, anybody can speak at council during public comment, there are two options, two opportunities for public comment. So we're not trying to reject people to speak, you can always come and speak. At the beginning, in the end, you got three minutes and speak, it's just during public comment, there's not engaging.
And to that note, that's one of the thoughts, because public comment's three minutes. You're saying five minutes for written petition and special presentations obviously have no time limit. So would those additional two minutes be enough for a written petition?
No idea, that's why I want this discussion and no action.
Well, I'd view it as written petitions would be written to us first, so we'd have time to read their petition before they come for their presentation. So that's why five minutes should be enough that they should have, if it's written, you wrote us, you can come present it. Okay, you know, and it would be like you're saying, if it's a written petition and if somebody wants to add it to the agenda. You know, they can write to any, all, any of us and two of us can add it to the agenda.
Yeah, that's how your current rules are.
That. And then the acceptance of gifts and donations, I would probably put that. Under six still, but I'd just create a six B, just all the, you know, divide that up into A, B, C.
Yep.
And if you want to put gifts and donations in there. You can put it on the agenda in that spot and then, because that's where we're saying.
It's special present.
Presentations and recognizations by the mayor or council and it is a recognition by the, the council.
And just real quick to make sure staff is hearing the council clearly. The five-minute presentation is, their presentation's five minutes, the dialogue is at five minutes. So if you have questions and stuff, you could continue, you know, you could ask questions, it could lead to other questions and have a dialogue longer than five minutes. But it's their time at the mic to go over their stuff is at the five minutes. It's, it's, it's kind of what staff's brain was thinking and I think that may have been what you were asking, Charles, but I could be wrong.
So, so just to clarify. The proposed ten would be someone who wants to take action, for example, when legal assistance came? And then the, the difference in the present, like, so what's the difference between written petitions and just presentations? So it's written petitions, they want some kind of action from them?
Yeah, so written petitions, they're petitioning you to do something, like legal assistance is a good example in my opinion. Presentations are reports from government agencies, consultants or special committees. So government agencies is when we get the annual reports from the clerk's office or the drain commissioner showed up one time, the county treasurer has come. The main judge has come and done like a court report for you. That's from government agencies. Consultants is when we have our auditor come in, which will be at your next meeting. And say, hey, here's what the fiscal year twenty-five audit showed for the city of Alleghen. That, because it's, that's not public comment, so that's why we throw them under there. And the special committees is if council creates a special committee, like this landlord, tenant, rental discussion we're having right now. That would fall under, because that's a special committee. That's not the public. That's presentations from government agencies, consultants or special committees. Written petitions is the public petitioning you for something. And then, public comment is just individ, I shouldn't say just, public comment is individuals coming in to present. They want to tell you something. Present their ideas. And again, not looking for action on this, it still needs to be fleshed out, I plan on bringing this up at your November twenty-second. Us, visioning process or strategic planning, whatever we're calling that, Saturday workshop.
So my understanding is if we're going to do this as written petitions in order to get on the agenda. Say somebody wants the Griswold at a discounted rate, they have to write to council and get it on the agenda then?
Yeah, we recommend that they, that they send a letter to all of council. All of your emails are on there and it just takes two of you to say, yeah, we'll entertain this. I mean, in my short time, I mean, not short time, in my time here, I've had a couple council members email the mayor and cop, you know, to me, copy the mayor and say, hey. We want to talk about X. And we put it on the agenda, because two council members have said, we want to talk about this. Um, so, it just takes two of you. I still want, I still want Parker or myself or Tracy or Carol or anyone else at city hall to be the gatekeeper of what could qualify for a written petition. I felt like it was just icky.
Yeah, that'd be fine with me, then I would probably also put in whatever our rules section and all our meetings that talk about written petitions. Just to kind of put a timeline on it, like if you wanted to get on the next agenda, please have it in before the Thursday or before Wednesday of the upcoming meeting.
Yeah.
Otherwise, there's no guarantee that you'll even get heard. Well, there's no guarantee either way, but it's in order for us to have at least time to consider and add you to the agenda, don't like email me the morning of and then expect.
Yeah, so I would anticipate that we will type up a proposed amendment to council's rules and procedures. And then you guys would say, yes, that's, we approve it, and there would be a section in that amendment on written petitions, how you submit them, et cetera.
Any other thoughts or feedback for staff? Alright, okay, thank you. Uh, moving down to agenda item number thirteen is public comment, this is the second public comment of the evening. If there is any public comment for items on on the agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Matthew Pivolar, three-twenty-nine Monroe. Um, it wouldn't be a city council meeting if I didn't show up. Um, and I have no objections to the holiday rates for the Griswold, but I'm just wondering. Um, and something I think you should consider working on potentially with the city attorney and the police department. Unfortunately, religious events, political events, nonprofit organizations have all now become targets for violence. So, if you're going to be using the Griswold for those type of activities, who's responsible for security? Is it clear that the event coordinator is the responsible party? Or if something happened to civil unrest, is the city going to be on the hook for all of the liability for all the injured individuals? And it's important that you don't just try to rely on insurance, because most insurance policies have an exclusion for civil unrest or violence. So you really need to sort of think that process through, maybe it's something as simple as just requiring anybody that's having an event. To touch base with the police department to figure out what they need to do. But if you're going to have an official employee of the city attending the event, it would be very easy for an attorney to say, well, this is a. City sanctioned event, you didn't supply security, you know, something happened and then you're on the hook. So that, that was just my only caution on that, I think it's a great idea to have the um, holiday rates, but times have changed, it's really sad, but we have to think about these things.
Alright, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, um, agenda item fourteen is communications from the city manager. Um, agenda item fourteen is communications from the city manager.
All right, I have a handful for you this evening. November thirteenth, which is this Thursday, from five to seven PM, uh, the DDA Downtown Development Authority for Alleghen will be hosting an open house to receive input on the future of downtown. We're calling it our master plan open house, but this is more or less kind of a kickoff, you know, just to hear from the public what they want to see the downtown look like over the next five to ten years. The last time we did this was in twenty twenty, and so we're at our five-year update for our downtown master plan. I believe Parker has brought that up a handful of times, and the DDAs discussed this. This Saturday at noon, the city of Alleghen has been asked to open the council chambers for a presentation of the Ambassador for Peace, which is an official proclamation from the Patriots and Veterans Affairs through the Republic of Korea. Um, they issue these medals to Korean War veterans. And I believe your father was a Korean War veteran, correct?
Korean War era.
Korean War era, thank you, Carl.
They sent him to Germany instead.
Yeah, they went to Germany instead. Um, recently, one of our residents, Roy James, he lives over on Sherman Street, uh, had the opportunity to participate in an honor flight with a bunch of veterans. They left from Kalamazoo, flew to Washington DC, our capital, got a tour of the capital, got, uh, the ceremony out there. Then they came back all in the same day. I had the pleasure, along with Tracy Perrigo, who is Roy's daughter, to welcome him back to Kalamazoo. It was really impressive, the hundreds and hundreds of people that were at the Kalamazoo Air Museum at nine PM at night to rec- welcome back all these veterans from the various wars over the years. As part of that flight, uh, someone on the flight said, hey, the Republic of Korea, which I know as South Korea, their government does this program, and we really would like, you know, to reach out to them and see if they'd honor Roy. And then another gentleman from Paw Paw, Michigan. So the gentleman from Paw Paw, Michigan will also be here, and they would like to do that here Saturday at noon.
Here?
Yep, right here at city hall, right in this room. I was asked if I'd come down and open up city hall, and I said, sure, that's easy enough. Um, so we're gonna have a little refreshments here that family members are putting together, and some residents of the community. Um, I wish the Alleghen County news was here this evening, so they could pick the, pick up and run with this, uh, event.
I believe they are watching the live stream that we provide.
Wow, excellent.
Sources have shared.
Good, uh, and then I also would hope, uh, that this gets also picked up by Wood TV eight and our local news stations as well. So when I share that with you, that I went ahead and just utilized my powers as the city manager to say, yeah, we can open up this room for that kind of, you know, formal celebration.
What are the times again, please?
Uh, Saturday at noon is when the ceremony will take place.
And is this like for the public, like we can?
Yeah, the public can come, very much, it's open to the public. In addition to, uh, the master plan, we have a handful of other open houses that will be coming down the pipeline for our projects. Do you remember the downtown in the Rossman Park neighborhood?
Yes, uh, we will be holding another five PM to seven PM open house on December ninth, that is a Tuesday. Um, and for those that attended, uh, we had a joint open house for the first phase of the downtown streetscape improvement project, along with the, uh, M dot, M eighty-nine, um, roundabout project, so it'll be similar to that, so it'll be split. We'll have information on the second phase of the streetscape improvement project, and one half of the room, and the other half of the room will be split into the Rossman neighborhood construction project. So we'll have, uh, representatives from Abinmarsh here that evening, as well as city, uh, representation to answer questions of folks who may live in these areas or just want to know what the heck is gonna be going on next year with our next phase of construction, so.
Uh, and then I'm gonna let you know that we gave it the college try on having that city hall connection hour. No one showed up. So I'm gonna go ahead and just piggyback with council members when you hold hours out in the neighborhood. I was invited to the last one that council member Hooker and Walker had at mug shots. I have no problem sitting down with other people. Uh, we are a very open and transparent city hall. It'd be hard pressed to find someone to say, no, the staff does not make themselves available, so we're gonna go that route moving forward. And then tomorrow, just to remind everyone, that city hall is closed because it is Veterans Day tomorrow. Um, at eleven AM, the American Legion will be doing their annual Veterans Day celebration down at the Veterans Monument. So it's a wonderful ceremony that Peter and Koviac, you know, orchestrates through the American Legion. And if you are free, I encourage you to make your way down there to pay respect to the veterans. And that is at eleven o'clock on the riverfront, down by the monument. That's all I have.
All right, uh, agenda item, well, we're still on the same one, sorry, no. Agenda item fifteen, roundtable discussion from council and mayor. Um, councilperson Canales, would you like to go first tonight?
Sure, I would.
All right.
And I don't have anything, thank you.
Oh, geez, that was suspenseful. Councilperson Hooker.
I just want to say, um, in recognition of Veterans Day tomorrow, thank you to all of our veterans.
Thank you. Councilperson Clark.
I want to piggyback on that, because, I mean, and I want to thank all the, you know, future armed services as well for their service.
Thank you. Councilperson Westover.
Thank you, mayor, I'm all set.
Okay. Councilperson Hooker.
I would like to invite anyone tomorrow night. We are having another warming session meeting to try to get this going. Much bigger group this year. We have several churches that are donating space. We're hopefully going to put the final touches to organizing with volunteers, um, spaces, calendar, like every Monday is here, or so on, and when we will open, when we won't open, and so on, in the hours. So if anyone would like to be a part of that, it's, uh, it is seven thirty tomorrow night at the Presbyterian Church on the corner of Cutler and Walnut, Walnut, Chestnut, Chestnut, yeah.
All right, thank you. Mayor Proton Hans.
I have nothing.
Okay, um, just piggybacking off of what Joel had shared about Saturday. Um, the Talon's Out Honor Flight, which operates out of, um, the Portage area. Um, if you know of a veteran, right now, they're trying to, um, get as many Vietnam vets on the flights that they can, I'm try- gonna try not to get emotional. Um, but if you are, if you know of a vet, um, go on to their website, there is an application to fill out. Um, and then they will contact you, and, um, you can go, you can also volunteer to be a guardian, which is what I did. Um, and that's how I was able to accompany my dad. Um, and it was incredible, um, thing to go on. There was actually a World War Two vet on my dad's flight. He was a hundred years old. Um, he was amazing, um, to, uh, get to talk with him and that. Um, but the thing on Saturday, one of the volunteers that, um, duh, that works with the, um, Talon's Out Honor Flight, she made all of this possible, um, on Saturday, and so I hope that people can come out. And the guy from Paw Paw, he is amazing too, um, and he was like my dad. They both served in Korea during wartime, and you had to, um, have some certain different criteria to meet to, in order to get this. So they both saw active, you know, active, um, you know, duty active during active wartime, so. So at noon, um, and then my other thing I want to say is, um, city staff kudos. So, um, they're al- always behind the scene, I know, helping me out with some different things. Um, as Joel had said earlier, the mayor just really runs the meeting. But, uh, you, sometimes I'm sure some of you guys get emails too, where you're like, yeah, I don't really, I can't really answer this, and this is a city staff thing to do. So they do a lot of that behind the scenes with emails that we get, and, you know, handling that kind of stuff. And then I was aware of a couch incident that happened in the city where a beat-up couch got tumbled out of a truck and, um, was kind of half haphazard on the side of the road. And I became aware of it, I said something to Joel, and, um, Joel and Parker actually went out and picked up this couch that was, you know, i- if somebody had hid that or whatever, um, that would have been a problem. So I just wanted to say there's a lot of that kind of stuff that they do for our residents that nobody, nobody knows about, so thank you. And that is all I had tonight. Um, with that, at seven sixteen, I will adjourn the meeting.